If everyone can take their seats, we'll get started. I need my gavel. Where'd Todd go? In the... For the effort of time, I'm gonna get us going. So, Dr. Roca, Natalie Roca, next is Dreamers Academy Charter Application. Hello.
Hi, good afternoon, Board members. Chair Ziegler, Superintendent Todd is on his way back.
Right.
As you can see in your agenda, we have the Dreamers Academy Charter School application. In a couple moments, I will ask the Dreamers Academy Governing Board to step up and have a discussion with you. As you recall, they initially submitted an application back in February during our regular charter application process. And based on the committee's findings, based on the evaluation criteria that's set forth by the state, and based on some of your comments, they withdrew their application and they have worked over the summer to address some of the deficiencies that the committee found, provide information that was initially missing from the application, and also address some of our other concerns. They resubmitted the application in August and our esteemed Charter Review Committee met again a couple of times to review the document. It's a slightly modified evaluation process in that we did not dive deep into those areas that had already been met before, the standards that were met, and focus on those that had the more important information missing and those that were more substantial. So, you have in front of you the summary, the four-page summary, as well as the comprehensive report. And if you see on the last page of the summary, the...most of the standards have been met. We still have a couple of areas where they're partially met because we have some additional questions for the applicant. So, in all, we're very pleased to see that a lot of information has been provided that addressed our concerns and we were able to quickly and thoroughly go through their application. So, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to their Governing Board members and ask them to have a seat. Thank you.
As they make their way forward, I just wanna comment publicly and I wanna thank you for your willingness to work with us. As we went through this process, we reached the point at which the Board was being asked to consider the application. And just in the interest of full disclosure, I called Jerry Chaffee and I said, "Jerry, what I don't wanna do is to put the Board in a position in which they have to choose between what I consider to be a flawed application and a group of people that they think very, very highly of." And I said, "Let's not put the Board in that position. If you would be willing to withdraw your application and fix the application so that it better represents the intent of your group." And I wanna thank you for being willing to do that.
Absolutely.
Welcome.
Thank you very much, actually. And we're back. Yeah, and thank you guys for, you know, offering that opportunity because as you would imagine, you know, sort of being local people, you know, this is our first bite at the apple, right? Didn't...and really didn't understand the expectations as much as we probably could have. You know enough about us and about the model and I think that we could probably dive right into it. I'll do a couple of brief introductions. We...everyone knows Dan Kennedy more than well. Jerry herself, Steve Zikafus, and someone you do not know, we're very, very proud to introduce to you. This is our principal. This is Dr. Ruby Zikafus, PhD from USF. Ruby is an amazing success story in her own right. She grew up as the daughter of migrant farm workers herself, for whom they...their highest and best sort of career goals were that maybe one day she would go cut hair at the local salon, and that's...that is a true story. She was a Teacher of the Year at Manatee County. She ran...she's been a principal and we are more than proud to have her and, you know, her... She was even covered in Dan...one of Dan Rather's bestselling books about, you know, the American dream. So, we're more than...so, you guys, I am just here to be pretty. The majority of the questions...
You failed.
Yeah, and I failed miserably. So, the majority of the questions here, obviously, will fall to Ruby in terms of the educational side of things and she's been...she's been with us full-time now for three months and has been diligently working on everything from staffing to curriculum, which is pretty impressive. But I didn't wanna...I did wanna say one last thing, which was, you know, watching the previous principals, it's just amazing, you guys, the stuff you guys have built here is just...it's fantastic. And it's very, you know, Jerry and I moved here from Chicago with the intent of, you know, ten years ago, to find the right school district for our kids. And it's just so reaffirming the...how hard you guys are working on this and what's going on here. Eric said something really interesting and he said, "It is all about the culture and all about the environment." And so, you know, we have to agree that it is all about the culture and all about the environment in these schools. And we're hoping to translate that to our vision of what Dreamers Academy is about, bringing that culture, that environment, that's warm enough for the children who are not necessarily speaking English as their first language. So, with that, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much and I appreciate the work and I appreciate the... I think there's really something to be said about the fact that it was pulled back and I think I would say it wasn't so much...not that we don't like you, 'cause I do, but it was more about really liking the idea and the vision of it. And...but it has to meet a certain asset, a set of standards for it to be successful and the continuity, as we've heard us talk, being really paramount for student success. So, I appreciate your efforts and I appreciate staff's efforts 'cause I know it was a lot of work and I really do, I appreciate it 'cause it's a bit different model than what we've experienced in the past. So, with that, I will hand it over to any Board members who wanna start off with questions. Any? Jane?
Well, I wanna say thank you to Dr. Natalie Roca and her committee because, you know, they worked pretty hard on this, not once but twice. And you all know what a great job they do in making sure that this...the criteria was met and that we understand your vision. And welcome to the new principal. And I guess my major concerns, I mean, you know, you've answered most of the questions, but my major concerns have to do with the English-speaking children who are entering kindergarten. And that, I guess, is one of the questions that I have. And then, any...anything that you can shed a light looking at, you know, you want 288 students and they must be this and this and how are we gonna find those students and what are we gonna do? We're not gonna offer them free computers. I mean, I've had a couple times at charter schools, I just wanna mention that, Jerry. Jerry's a great marketer. But nothing...but nothing are we going to be giving out for free 'cause I mean, we've had that happen before in our charter schools. But give me an idea of what you're going to do in order to find these children and populate in that, you know, fifty-fifty split, shall we say, the first year.
Okay, I'm gonna take the enrollment and population issues. She's gonna take the education issues. So, when you say 288 students in our first year, there's only 108 kindergarteners. This is a model, the dual-language, two-way immersion model, two-way because we're looking for a linguistic balance, 50% English dominant, 50% Spanish dominant. Those are six kindergarten classrooms. The rest, we have a kind of a hybrid model where we're gonna have two classes...classrooms each from first to fifth grade. Why would we do that? Because a lot of these little kindergarteners have siblings. Because a lot of students are struggling in the existing schools. We're looking at three schools because all of the locations we're looking at are north of Fruitville. And as Ms. Oliver said, she had 12 kids that were retained in third grade and 11 of those she thinks are in charter schools. We strongly believe that kids, not only the ones retained, but kids that are not comfortable, that have behavioral issues, that perhaps need a linguistically accessible model, culturally competent, relevant model, original curriculum that we're writing right now and developing and testing in real classrooms. We feel we're gonna get a lot of those struggling kids and we're designing for that. So, how are we gonna get these kids? The 108 kindergarteners, we're working with the Early Learning Coalition. We are going to do several open houses. Already, we have a lot of people that have asked us. I've even have pregnant people that have asked us. Most of those are English-dominated kids. I invited Mr. Tommy Gregory today because I met him about a year ago at Tiger Bay when I was pitching the school. That's how long it's been. And he approached me with his wife, I didn't know who he was, and he said, "You know what? We so strongly believe in dual-language education that we actually move to the Dominican Republic because Sarasota didn't have a dual-language school. Our kids are bilingual." You know, not everybody has that choice and we know that the English-dominated families that are highly educated, a lot of them, they wanna put their kindergarteners there. So, we don't think we're gonna have an issue with that population or recruiting. It's me, after all.
She will hunt you down.
And about money, as I said before, people and organizations give me money just to make me go away.
So, you have no issue.
And so, looking at the academic piece, these are questions that we asked ourselves, first of all. We looked and we researched and we found the work of Fred Genesey and he is an expert in dual-language and especially in students who have disabilities. And so, with that research, we went ahead and made sure that our kindergarten block had three blocks that were flexible with English and Spanish and the teacher would then go ahead and make sure that she sees her class, what are the needs at that time, and then can flex back from English and Spanish. The word work, which is the piece that where kids learn the sound-symbol relationship, the alphabetical principle, will be in English. So, we wanna make sure that we reiterate that in the...there's two blocks, reading one, reading two, but that word work time is specifically set aside so that those kids are learning that alphabetical principle in English. But then, if we have a struggling kindergartner, and that's kind of what I've heard the most of, is their concern for the struggling kindergartner. Like any other kindergartner who is struggling, when he enters our doors, he will be given a screener diagnostic to see what are his areas of deficiency. And we'll put him through the process of inner...make sure he has aligned those deficiencies with interventions that then we can meet during that I and E time, which again is flexible to his or the English language or the Spanish language, whichever's dominant.
I'd even add inside that, that it... I'd even add inside that the research supports that a struggling student going into a dual-language kindergarten outperforms a struggling student going into a traditional classroom, based on Genesey's research, because of the challenge of that dual-language, searching for meaning that's created in the brain and the problem-solving it takes and the fact that Spanish language acquisition is...Spanish language learning literacy is a little bit faster and easier than English literacy due to the number of syllables, the number of...
Right, English has 44 sounds, 26 letters. Spanish has 28 letters, 28 sounds. So, it's easier for them to grapple with.
Shirley.
You know, I think that kind of answers some of the questions that were in here, like the curriculum plan, it went from partially meets to does not meet. And I think we also had the...
Does not to partially.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't think...
Nothing went backwards.
Nothing went backwards.
Final May 8 report, preliminary final. We don't have a final...so, we're not...we're from the prelim...it went from here to here.
Yes, ma'am. Start all over again, go back.
Yeah, never mind, I've got something else to talk to you about. And that is how it's going to affect the district if you open up this school. You will be pulling kids out of our students, out of our schools and maybe some of them will be the lower quartile.
We hope so.
Or maybe you'll be pulling the kids who are doing better in some of those schools because you're gonna be pulling kids that have parents who care. Or, no, parents who are more involved in their kids. And, you know, and that...and it always kind of looks at what does this do to our school? And we're also looking at the schools that are north of Fruitville Road and right now, those schools are under-enrolled and you'll be taking more out. So, you know, that makes it harder for us to try to build another school where we need one at Ashton. But, you know, ideally, you wanna start at kindergarten. But I think that, you know, when you're looking at some of those other schools, and we've seen it with other charter schools that start, the first year they start. I mean, it happened in Visible Men's Academy, it happened at the School of the Arts. The first year, they were Fs. You know, not that I'm expecting an F from you, I hope it doesn't happen. But, you know, you've gotta be able to look at that and I'm not...I'm looking for you to come out with an A the first year. But I do think that it's gonna be a struggle. I mean, it's gonna be a struggle. You can't turn these kids around any year. You see what trouble we have turning them around. And...but because we do have struggles turning these kids around, I'm willing to look at another way. And you've done a lot of research on this, you've done a lot of work on this and I truly hope and pray that it will succeed, not just for you, but for these kids.
Thank you.
And these families. But it, you know, it's a big lift you're taking and it's a big risk that you're gonna be able to do this because I would hate to have these kids come over there and then after two or three years, find out, well, you know, it wasn't a really good idea. Because there are, you know, differences of opinion on whether this program does work. You've got some that say it does and then we've got others that are saying, "Yeah, it doesn't." But I'm willing to give it a try because we're looking at kids that are not doing so well in our schools and I wanna give them every chance they can get. And if you've got a new way of doing it that might help, that might bring it up, I'm willing to give it a chance and I appreciate you hanging in there and working so hard to bring it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline?
Of all of the ratings that are here, educational plan, organizational plan, the one that concerns me the most is your educational plan, which 56% meets the standard. That should be our key. I mean, it's great that you have an organizational plan and business plan, but 56% meets the educational needs. That, to me, is not okay. It's, to me, it's too low. To me, it's...I have too many questions about it. To put our kids into something that might not happen, I just can't, I just can't do that. So, what I've heard is you have...you want 108 kids the first year. You're gonna open in three locations?
No, 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 no.
You said three locations.
No, we're looking...we can't...we cannot talk to developers, owners, or buildings until we have an approved charter. We are looking at three locations north of Fruitville. That is why we chose the...
You want one of the three.
Right, 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 right. No, 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 one location.
Big bite.
No, one location.
What the heck?
No, no.
They're risqued.
And you're designing your own curriculum? And you don't...so, we don't know if that's going to meet the needs of the state? Or if it's going to tie into the state assessment?
There's two different things. There's the model of language acquisition itself and then there's the content of the units of study that they're going to be under. So, the delivery is the one thing that's gonna be in the two languages. Now, I'm not sure, I haven't read a study yet that has proven it not to work, if it's met with fidelity. And that's the one thing that we're really...that's why we're studying really hard and making sure that we're researching the models that work. The research is like 30 years old and I don't know that we've read a study that shows that it doesn't work. And the curriculum part is just kind of really putting together the pieces of mentor text. Can we find them in Spanish? Making sure we're looking at curriculum pieces that are belligerent so we can have them in English and in Spanish, so that the standards meet. I mean, so, all those things are the things that we're putting together because we do want a program that meets the fidelity of the research.
You're putting it together, but you don't have it.
Well, we're testing it. We could use a curriculum that you have and just translated. We just believe, like, every, every...I'm in graduate school for a Masters in Ed Leadership right now. I have a lot of contact with pre-service teachers. Every single class is all about culturally relevant curriculum. That doesn't mean that we're not meeting the standards. Every single unit of study starts with the standards, but how you deliver and make sure they understand. The six schools that you had presenting here have 56.2 minority representation. The district is 30. That alone was not addressed, but that is a little bit more than poverty as a correlation. We are recognizing that we're gonna get a very diverse school. And if you look at some of the districts, like Broward County, fourth, sixth-largest district. Chicago, this year in Chicago, their former ELLs, their former ELLs surpassed their never-ELLs academically. I had to go hug that guy and ask them for the data 'cause I didn't believe him. He's been in that district 20 years. They...dual-language education, they're now in like the fifth generation of it.
Right. And I would also add that other districts are starting to recognize that there is an issue with dual-language learners. And Hillsborough County opened up two sites this year. There's someone in Lakeland who's kind of connected with us, she's starting her application. So, they are...there is a recognition that something different has to be done and the research, again, is about 30 years old, that it does work.
But I have to approve what I have here and what I'm reading here. Not what you're telling me is going to happen or is happening in Lakeland or someplace else. I have to approve this.
The ELL plan that Sarasota County has, one of the six models is the dual-language approach. It's one of the least-used models across the state, but it is a Florida-approved goal. The reason between the...the reason why you see a 55%, I believe it is, within that realm, is because two of the questions are very similar, is what happens to our children that are English dominant in the system? We are not only confident we're going to go ahead and have the students knocking at our door and parents knocking at our door to come in so they can learn from each other, the English dominant, Spanish dominant, but additionally, we're confident that any struggling student coming through the door, we're going to be able to challenge their brain and make sure they can gain literacy for that. So, if you're looking at the numbers on the page, the similar question that's between two of the subcategories is about that English-dominated child and that's the reason why I think your question was predominant at the beginning of this is that's a major concern that's spread throughout the document a couple different places. And once the model is understood, because in the west coast of Florida, it's not very prevalent at all, once the model's understood and that you can come back to us in two or three years and you're gonna say, "Look at the wonderful culture we've created, look at the kids that are learning, look at the graduation rate that we project to have as they move towards the school system within Sarasota County," you're gonna be confident about that and see their competence.
Oh, that's that...that's still...excuse me, Shirley. That still gives me the 50-50 balance. I mean, how are you going to get 50 occasions? Or English-speaking lang...
Oddly, Ms. Zucker, the interesting thing about the data here, and this is just me, you know, seeing all what the big brains here are doing, that there...our largest worry is that they're gonna come more, there's gonna be more of them. Because engaged parents want their kids, that's a huge advantage. The linguistic advantage is substantial and the bilingual brain is a substantial example as they see the data everywhere we've seen, 30-year...we keep talking about these longitudinal studies, that these kids that start in kindergarten with two languages, no matter whether you're on the English side or the Spanish side, by the time they hit sixth grade, they're...
Seven months ahead.
Seven months ahead of their peers.
Across all content areas.
You just said it, though, engaged parents.
Yeah.
That's one of our hardest challenges, to engage parents.
And I would venture to say that one of those reasons is because they feel that they have a hard time navigating the system because of language.
I...sorry, I respectfully disagree with you.
So, wait, 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 wait.
Parents have a hard time navigating...
So, when you have...when you have...when you have someone who cannot speak...
Let's make sure one person's talking at the same time. And I don't...and I think, and just to be fair, I want it to be answered questions. I don't know if some of these things may be beyond a debate that I don't know that we address actual...
These are...these are concerns.
I know, I'm not...that wasn't directed, it's just putting that out there that...
So, I apologize, would you please continue?
No, I've not, I've lost my train of thought.
Okay, well, I think where you were heading, right, that's where you were heading. So, when we're talking about...so, when I first married Jerry, I walked into her house, I didn't know what the heck was going on. It was in Spanish. Everybody was screaming on top of each other, the food smelled weird, the people were...you know, it was just like this whole thing. Was I engaged? No. I didn't speak the language, I wasn't culturally relevant to the situation. What Dr. Zikafus was saying was, is that when parents cannot go to a school and talk to the principal, communicate to the teacher, communicate to the school nurse, call in and talk to the attendance lady and tell them that they're...they can't...they're not coming to school, they're by definition unengaged 'cause they cannot communicate. When you have a fully Spanish-speaking staff, the engagement levels, proven through all these studies, are through the roof because the parents now can communicate with everybody at the school. That's what we're talking about.
I'm asking you to do the reverse.
Okay, I just wanted to share with you some research by Fred Genesey, who also wrote the book Dual Language Development and Disorders. He states, "A common misconception is that students who are enrolled in a dual-language program may struggle in their native language. His research clearly asserts that literacy skills transfer from one language to the next, particularly in languages with similar alphabetic characters, and struggling students who are in a language immersion program outperform their traditional school-struggling counterparts." That's research.
When Ruby says 30-year-old research, she means 30-year longitudinal studies. It's not like old research. Right.
Thank you for clarifying.
I, you know, I wanna invite all of you to the largest Hispanic festival in Sarasota County. It's this...we're doing it, it's our 16th year, it's on the 3rd of November. There's gonna be 15,000 people, last year it was about 16,000. Very engaged Hispanic people that do activities with their children. These are...but most of them are two-parent households. They are engaged. They just, when their kid comes home, third, fourth, and fifth grade, they are not reading, they're failing, they don't know how to help them, they get reprimanded. So, now they're getting, you know, they're failing in school and now they're getting yelled at by their parents. There's nowhere for them to go. So, I mean, this school is...I don't know how to relay to all of you that it... We can't wait anymore. It's urgent, it's a necessity. And the rest of the country is frankly smoking us. I mean, this is my county, this is my school district, we need to do this. I mean, this is my county, this is my school district, we need to do this, nobody else can do it. And, and I wanna do it from within the district. We want to do it from within the district, we wanna open tracks in, at Tuttle, at Gosho, um, you know, this is, Broward County has forty-three dual-language tracks. Weston is their most affluent suburb, all of their schools have dual-language tracks. We're, we're following their model.
So, a couple of things, and I'll go around if, if there's additional questions. I, I wanted to, I know, I, I know, I know, trying to make it a way. Um, I, I just wanted to ask, uh, on the parent, I, I know the parental engagement piece, I understand what you're saying, I think their point-making is that there are families that are disconnected because of the language breakdown. My concern, um, I, you know, the educational, the meets, partially meets, I think it's a risk, and I think that when you compare it to what we're used to, or what we see, that's where it's not hitting those benchmarks. The question is, are we, are you willing to take that risk or not? Because I believe that they meet other areas. From the research I've done, there are very successful, Texas has done a tremendous job, I know some inner-city schools have done some tremendous job. I know as a parent with a preschooler, I wanted her to be in a classroom that was dual, dual language, I can't speak another language, and I would love for her to have that opportunity so I can speak from that aspect, I know that that is powerful. And I do believe that you are right, I think that you'll find there's a lot more families that are English-speaking that wanna enter your school. And so the question remains on how do you find those students and families to enroll that we need, that surely address, that we are saying, we need, this is a great opportunity to lift up some of the lower quartile, you have the ability to access them. How do you, from a compliance standpoint, that's where I'm gonna take it, how do you successfully achieve that fifty-fifty split without going into a whole world of discriminatory, like, there's a compliance function here that's always, and that was my worry back before. Um, and if it meets that, and it has to meet that box, it's not, and if, so, so can you address that? 'Cause that's still something I can, I'm concerned about.
Great question.
Yeah, okay. Um, well, Broward County is doing it, I mean, we're using Broward because they have so many dual-language models, and they have a lot of staff that's been doing this for a long time. They actually run a dual lottery system. We act, these clarification questions are due tomorrow. I hope that you all get a chance to read them, because we went into great detail with some concrete examples from different districts, from the FLDOE, the U, I mean, we're in contact with actually Jose Viana, who is the USDOE, I, he called me, I thought I was in trouble, I offended somebody, but, no. Like, um, so we, it will be met. I mean, Broward County runs two lotteries for those two linguistic groups already.
So you have a maximum based on your capacity, fifty percent English-speaking, fifty percent, and then that's how you use lottery systems?
And that's how, that's how Broward County runs it, yep.
We can go, it's, I mean, the, the model, um, is successful with a sixty-forty or seventy-thirty, we're looking for a fifty-fifty, it's just an easier balance to understand.
And then my final question, and then I'm done, and I'm sorry, is recruit, obviously you saw before here, instructional staff is paramount to the success of this, so you need, not only do you need high-quality instructional staff, you need ones that are very specifically trained in dual language. How do you perceive fitting that need?
Um, one of the things that, um, one of the ways that I added value to my former district is, we ran a very, um, highly successful recruitment campaign. It wa, it ended, it was started with brochures, videos, um, we, we recruited three teachers from Puerto Rico. Um, my final year, I had eighty-seven percent new staff, and so, um, but we were full. And so, whereas other, other schools were struggling to hire, um, me and my sister principal were very successful, and we, we tapped into colleges of education in California, in, um, Texas, and in Florida. We tapped into major listservs of organizations, um, and again, we sent those pamphlets out to everybody we knew, and these big organizations that, that, um, teachers of mathematics, um, the, um, National Association of Teachers of English, um, so we just sent them, and, and they replied, they came. And again, we tapped into a university in Puerto Rico who sent me three, and she's anxious to say, "How many, how many more do you need?"
Okay.
So, so I feel that that part, the, the piece that we, that we are working on now is the training piece. We're making sure that we have a summer institute that is specifically dealt to the dual-language piece, because that's the piece we really wanna make sure we focus on and that it's dealt with fidelity. And then we've written other grants.
Uh, we've, we've written other grants to have other supportive professional development come in. Um, once we get them there, we have a plan for training. Uh, the retention is something that's also a critical part. When we talk about recruitment, you can't not talk about retention.
Of course, of course.
Leadership's a critical part of retention. Um, we talked about making sure that you feel the culture, you engage the, engage the staff, you appreciate the people part of this. If there's one thing, and, uh, Tom mentioned all the wonderful things about Dr. Zikafus, I got a slew more, but I'm not gonna go through those, but the one thing that I've seen-
Good for you.
The one that I've seen is that, that when leadership appreciates people and, and appreciates where they're coming from and where they're going, they will stay with that leader regardless of the ten thousand dollars.
I agree. Um, one of the things that I did, um, to make sure that I could tap into my staff is I asked them, "Now I have you here, what can I do to keep you?" I gave everyone a, a three-by-five index card, and they were able to say directly to me anonymously, "What do I have to do to keep you here?" And I did that two or three times a year, because I wanted to make sure that my staff became my staff. And then it's us, it's not just me, but it's an us mentality. Um, I'm a firm believer in Covey, seven habits of appreciating who you are and who is with you, adding value to people. Um, and again, when, whenever you value them with, with, um, you know, a card in the mail, make sure you remember their birthday, you know their kids, who are, who are they?
Donuts.
Donuts, on the fly, pizza for the team, you know, uh, uh, standing in the front of the door, "Good morning, how are you?" That is how you make sure that you keep your staff. Um, so yes, those are things that I feel that I'm very, very well-versed in, to make sure that I not only recruit, but then be retained.
Perfect, thank you.
Ruby, Ruby's right on track there, you know, when, when I left SMA, I had never, ever recruited a teacher, but I had over two hundred resumes on my desk when I left.
I bet.
Yeah. And I think the uniqueness and the quality of this school is gonna be similar, and I think it's gonna fill up practically overnight with, with students, I really do.
I, I, I hope so, I, I believe-
I'm pretty sure it will.
I know Eric has not had an opportunity, okay.
Yeah, I, I still have two major concerns. Um, I know our staff has contacted Tallahassee on multiple occasions, they've actually reached out to the charter, um, review representative on the CRC, um, asking them to reach out to the state, um, directly, but to no avail have we gotten a level of comfort, um, about how the selection process can happen that's non-discriminatory. So, I have many concerns, but-
Really good question.
A foundational concern is, that's, that's like a non-starter for me, okay? And I know you, you said that there was a dual lottery, but I can envision what happens if you have a hundred people apply, ninety percent of them are, are non-English speakers, and ten percent are speak, English speakers, 'cause I, I read the studies that you sent us the link to, and it said the optimum was fifty-fifty. So what are you gonna do? Are you gonna tell a bunch of Caucasians, "I'm sorry, you can't, um, come here"? Um, it also creates a precedent. What happens if we were in the reverse? Somebody starts a charter school, and now they're telling Hispanics or African-Americans, "You can't come here." Um, discriminating on race is a very slippery slope, one that I personally do not wanna go down, and so I'm gonna need a level of comfort from the state. Um, not, this is how they do it in Chicago, I'm gonna need a level of comfort from them. And I have another concern too.
Right, let, let me address that, because, um, because I've been in contact with Mr. Adam Emerson, he did respond to me.
Finally.
I do include his comments and his emails in the clarification question. Adam Emerson is the head of the charter schools. Now, there aren't dual-language charter schools, I mean, there, there's one, and it's a high school, uh, and it's a district school. So, um, you know, so he may not be familiar with this, but one thing I wanna say is that this school is an equity school. So, it's, it's, it's fascinating to me that the concerns are that we may be discriminating against English-dominant kids or, or anybody else. Um, this, these are two linguistic groups we will have, there's a, a, a English-dominant group and a Spanish-dominant group, and that goes to the core of the dual-language program. Um, so, the, the two-system lottery has been, uh, effectively, uh, implemented for years in other Florida counties, and when I, um, the last-
But, but, but when I call, when my research showed that those dual, um, lottery systems were for district managed school, not for charter schools, correct? Is that, did your research show the same thing?
Research shows the same thing.
Okay, 'cause, 'cause you, you, I was getting the impression, I know for the people thought that that dual-enrollment would, lottery was not had to do with, with charter schools.
No, no, but if, if a district school, a dual-language program is oversubscribed, then either one of the linguistic groups, they have to conduct a lottery. The lottery process is the same. Let's hope we have this problem. I mean, if we have this problem, it means a lot of people wanna be in our school.
No, no, you can have the problem with people, how the applications come in, even if you're not, um, total. But my other concern, I'm, I'm interested in time, I'm just trying to go through, my other concern has to do with the curriculum, that I hope at the time when this comes up for a vote, that we are given some opportunity to, to our staff, um, maybe the curriculum expert on the CRC, some specific curriculum questions, 'cause going to Ms. Zucker's point, um, that fifty-six percent, um, doesn't really tell the whole story.
Right.
Um, I mean, you were there.
You're right.
It was, you, I mean, it was, it was five-four, the vote, um, so-
You're, you're right, and some of the questions, um, with, with, were due to lack of understanding, and that was also presented within, um, the context of the meeting, is, is because we don't understand how this works. Um, it is a paradigm shift, to say the least, and I think that, um, the questions that are, are, are very, very clearly understood, from a curriculum perspective, I understand where those questions come from, um, but it is a lack of understanding or a lack of research-based where they come from.
But I hope we can ask questions of staff at that time, 'cause I mean, just to give, for the benefit of the board, one of the issues was, and I'm probably butchering this process, is struggling student comes in, learns how to say the A, uh, A, but they learned it, they learned it just the Spanish way to say A, "Ah", they learned "Ah", uh, and so, but then, but then they, 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 then, when they have to take third grade, the FSA, they're, they're not familiar with how to say "A", you know? And so then they end up leaving, and they end up going to ME, Boca, Gosho, and they don't know the "A" sound in, in English, and how that happens. I don't think that that was, um, not understanding, I think that that was a different paradigm, like, like you said.
Right, right, again, you're talking sounds, which would be kindergarten, not-
But that was just one issue that they, they had, one concrete-
It is, it is definitely a paradigm shift.
That, that was a specific example that was brought up, uh, the CRC, and so, um, I would hope that, uh, Dr. Boden, that you allow us to ask some specific questions, you know, uh, going piggyback what Ms. Zucker said about the curriculum education, which, you know, is to meet. I'm glad you have the organization, I'm glad that, you know, it's financially sound, but when the rubber meets the road, it's, it's curriculum and education. So is that possible, Dr. Boden?
Absolutely, but I wanna speak to the fact that this is exactly what you would expect from a school that is attempting to make such a shift in the way we educate students, is that I can give you an application that's a hundred percent in each of these categories, but it would be the replication of a school that we already have. And so, the fact of the matter is, two years from now, they'll be able to answer these questions, but there is a lab-school component to what's going on here. And so, we will try to answer some of those questions from a staff perspective, but you have to understand, going into this, there is an element of speculation.
We talked about-
And I think, and I think that, that part of that judgment is going to be on behalf of the parents, is that they have to understand that they are enrolling of their own free choice, students into a school in which there are some unsettled questions about how they're going to deliver their curriculum. And I think, in the interest of full disclosure, you have to put that out there, is that I don't foresee a situation at which, if we met intensively with them for months, that they would get to a hundred percent, because some of these are going to have to be adjusted as the school operates. And some parents are going to be comfortable with that, and other parents are going to say, "You're not going to experiment on my child." And so, you're going to run that spectrum. But so, to answer your question in a word, yes, staff will lend what expertise we have to help you settle some of these questions in your mind, but at the end of the day, there are going to be unsettled questions on this application when you're asked to vote a simple yes or no.
I, I can tell you this much, you would've been proud of your staff. The level of knowledge when it came to ELL, the level of sophistication, the questions and discussion your staff had on this issue, you, you would be, you, you have every reason to be proud of your staff.
I would agree with that. This committee was beyond, um-
They made us better.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so, so you, you'd been very proud of, of, of your staff, and, and you should be. Um, I think when it came to this ELL issue, um, they were very knowledgeable on it, and it came to curriculum, you have some of the best curriculum, um, developed, developed in, in the state, um, and you should be very proud of, of those staff members.
But what I wanna say very clearly is if my staff, and I agree one hundred percent with what you're saying, but if my staff believed in this educational plan one hundred percent, we'd do it ourselves. That's the, the cornerstone issue, is if we believed in what they were trying to accomplish, then we would be doing it. And so, that's part of why it's a charter school application, as opposed to your staff coming in proposing a school within a school or a, a new program, is that we have looked at it, and we're not completely sold on it. And, and that's just, that's just being real honest about it, and, and we've had these conversations very openly.
Actually, a, a member of the CRC staff, the, the curriculum member, actually said, "We should be doing this at Tuttle." And, and I was sitting right there, I'm like, "Yes, you should," so.
And Jay, and I, oh, Eric, I wanna make sure you finish. Is that it? Okay.
Jane?
Well, I, I, first of all, I wanna, I just wanna make a general statement, and that is that I like this. What I like about this, and of course, anytime that Dan Kennedy is associated with anything, I like it better.
Yeah.
Uh, but, but what I like about it is it's unique, and we've said this for a long time, and some people keep coming to us for charter schools, and they're not unique. They're not offering anything out of the box, they're not offering anything that we don't do. And that in itself is one of my big considerations. Second thing is that it's not of the community, our community, this is, that makes me very happy. There are some educational components that aren't quite there yet, it's fluid, I know there are some, some things that, that need to be resolved, but, but I do like a lot of what I see. I know I've had numerous conversations with Natalie Roca about this, and I really, you know, I think that we're on the right track. One of the things that I'm most concerned about, though, is that, um, Jerry, we get in writing that, that the proposed admission-in-lottery process does meet statute, and I mean by that not, you know, that is nailed down, just because that could be a big encumbrance later down the road. But that's one of the big things for me, but, but, uh, you know, all in all, um, it's, it's different, it's, it's out of the box, it's something that would meet the needs and the challenges of, um, a group of students that we're not, and I wanna learn to speak Spanish, I've tried several times, I've had conversations about what's the best way to do that, but-
I'm Cuban, I still can't do it.
But, you have challenges.
And, and that is at the core of what the application is all about. It, it is a, for a specific, um, targeted population that, right now, is, is suffering. Thank you. Shirley, and then, oh, no.
I wanted to add one, one, one point to that. Uh, you mentioned that everybody's thinking, and I, I know this is a risk, we know this is a risk for the district, and we understand that that risk, those students are now spread out throughout our wonderful schools. Um, I mean, we all know that. We're talking about getting those kids, those at-risk kids, and doing something different, doing something intentional, doing something proven. Now, when you have amazing people that look at an application, it's a completely new model, that all of a sudden they have to research, and, you know, don't believe your lying eyes, it's, it's difficult, and we understand that. So, we're doing it for the kids, I mean, we're here for the kids. So, we're doing it for the kids, I mean, we're here for the kids. I could be retired by the pool with a margarita, I'm not doing that, we're working twelve-hour days to bring this to Sarasota.
Shirley, and then Caroline?
You know, Eric, you brought up, you know, I, I think it was if we were teaching the English students, an A is an ah, or how does that handle, you know, when they get to the FSA, but I think it's the same program, when you've got a student, Spanish-speaking student who thinks an A is an ah.
Absolutely.
And, and how are we going to help him get through that difference in, in the FSA? I do believe that this will be a big help for parental involvement, I know that at our program at Church of the Palms, we've got a lot of Spanish-speaking parents who have a difficulty talking to us when we're trying to help their students, because the parents don't speak English, or when they come in for the backpack program, you know, and, and that is hard.
Yes.
I mean, I can't imagine to be able to have that conversation and, and get it back and forth, so I would think that it, yes, it will help parental involvement, and I also think that just because you're a charter school, I mean, parents have to be involved to get to that charter school, I mean, it, it takes that parental involvement in the beginning, and I was thinking about how this was going to help our Spanish-speaking students, but Dr. Kennedy, you brought up the, how it helps the English-speaking students when they get out, and then I'm thinking, well, you know, all these other countries all teach dual language.
Ninety percent of Europe takes the second language.
You know, and, and so when you travel and you hear how these other countries are starting dual language from the very beginning, and gee, you know, they're, they're surpassing us, you know, maybe this dual-language thing might be something that, hey, really is going to help the English-speaking students, and, and I know it will help when we travel, and I really didn't think of that as, as an advantage for our English-speaking students, but I guess, and I would imagine we do have people who do travel in the Sarasota County area that would say, "Yeah, that, that, we understand that having that extra language and starting them in kindergarten is where we need to go," so...
A child's brain learns two languages at one time, it masters much more than if it just does a monolingual.
So, I didn't, I didn't think of that as, as a positive before, because I was only focusing on the Spanish-speaking students, but now that I'm thinking about if this is going to improve our English-speaking students too, you know, by the time they get into middle school.
And the, the researcher that you quoted was actually the one that talked about the alphabetic principle with the writing and the struggling English student kindergarten.
Yeah, and so we can see that other countries are doing it, we've got other areas in the state doing it, and, and, and schools in other states doing it.
Yeah, let me tell you just a little story, several years ago when I was principal of Sarasota High School, I started a student exchange program with Costa Rica, so I went down there and I toured about sixty schools, and one of the things I found was extremely interesting, especially at the high school level, was one class each day was taught in English. And by the time those kids graduated from high school, they could speak English. It works, this model will work, it will help our kids, it'll help a significant number of the minority student body.
Thank you.
Get those scores up for the district too.
Thank you.
One thing I wanted to just say real quickly too, is that we don't, we, I don't want you all to think that we're going to draw just from your, from districted schools. There have been a lot of people approaching us that send their kids to Catholic schools, send their kids to other schools, I'm sorry, but SAA has a large, and SSIS has a large percentage, SSIS is fifty percent Hispanic, there's a lot of parents that, these schools don't offer that dual-language education, and, and they want their kids to be bilingual, they're by third and fourth grade, we hear from all the churches, you know, churches have, Hispanic churches are growing, and they tell us, the, the deacon actually, I met with a deacon here in Sarasota, and with a diocese head, and they said, you know, we go to these families, and their third and fourth graders are communicating with their parents in English, and the parents are answering in Spanish, this is from the priests, from the pastors, from the healthcare workers, that, that cannot happen, when you lose that link with your own parents and grandparents, I mean, that is, that is cognitively affecting our kids, they're not going to do well.
And behaviorally.
And behaviorally.
Caroline, I know you've been patiently waiting for your comment.
Sorry.
I am still not convinced, and when I hear my superintendent say, "This is a lab school, and the district wouldn't do it because they, there's not enough proof that it'll work," that does not give me comfort that I should move forward with this. And this is curriculum, and my responsibility as a board member, to make sure that I'm comfortable with a charter school or with anything before I move forward, I am not, and you doubly made me not comfortable in trying to make me comfortable.
Would you be willing to give us an hour or two and ask all your questions one-on-one?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and we are well beyond our time even for our final, I don't even think we're going to make our third item, but I think for me, and I know two other board, I mean, the, the compliance piece to me is, because I think this is amazing, I think Todd hit the nail on the head, in my personal opinion, which is not going to come to surprise anybody, but I think parents who are well aware of that, what they're getting into, they should know, and I hope that you're absolutely transparent, that's going to be our job, if this is approved, that they do know that this is something that's completely different, and that our staff challenged you as they should, because they need to make sure, if given the reins, that our children are going to be successful, because they're all our students, this is just giving a different, access to a completely different model. I think it makes a lot of sense, I think there's a lot of opportunity there, it's the question of the book of the board, I think, are you willing to take that risk or not? And, you know, I think I, I, as long as I get clearance on the compliance piece, I'm, I'm definitely going to be supporting it, but the compliance piece has to be, I mean, because I think Jane said it perfectly, that could open up so many issues that we wouldn't even, you know, all the good in this would be lost so quickly, and, and I don't...
When you say clearance on the compliance piece, can you give me a name of the person that would ask who has your concern, like, tell me who?
For FDOE.
Okay, can, is there a specific person, the commissioner?
Can I ask Adam too?
Okay, I will, absolutely. I will send them the video, Adam, if you're listening to me, I'm calling you tomorrow.
Because there's a very, there's a very specific statutory, I mean, I'm very familiar with all the statutes on how selection of charter schools go, and how choice programs within a district go, you have to follow that.
Absolutely.
We deal with it all the time within district, it's, it's very important, so that just needs to be tightened up or just clarified, I think, I know I have a concern with it, and three other board members mentioned it, so Todd.
Perfect.
We heard loud and clear from our principals today that talked about, it's not just Spanish and English, we talked about Creole and all those others, and so you talk about dual language, what are you doing with the third, fourth, fifth languages, which of your two bins do they go into? If they speak Russian as their native language, how do they fit into this? Is this, is a dual language, and we've talked a lot about Spanish and English, but we haven't talked about all those other English language learners.
And you have eight minutes before we get kicked out, so...
So, it's a choice school, I remind you that if a Creole or Russian parent wants to be in our choice school, they will be given every consideration.
In which of your two bins?
English, that anybody that's not Spanish dom, no, anybody that's not Spanish dominant is already immersed in English culture, they would be going into the English dominant, that's the way the rest of the two thousand schools do it, English dominant group is the way, and they would be trilingual.
Okay. Okay, um, thank you very much, I'm looking at, there's no final questions, and I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Board members Robinson, sit back down real quickly, thank you. We have item number three that we don't have time for, so I apologize to staff who've been patiently waiting, but I think we gave it, gave you a heads-up that we were running late, and we'll have to push that to the next workshop, so thank you, and I apologize, but I hope it was an entertaining meeting to watch. We are adjourned until three o'clock for our regularly scheduled board meeting.